Good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, December 4th meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners is called to order. I ask if you will please join me in a few moments of silence. And now, as you're able, if you will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are recognitions, and I will turn this over to Manager Cliff Augur.
Mr. Mayor, first up, I'd like to ask the Public Works Director Ralph Brill to come up to introduce his newest employee.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce Sue Cummings. Sue had come to us, she was in the medical field for about seventeen years and got tired of filling out all those forms and wanted to change, so she decided she would come and work with us for a while. Sue lives in Kill double Hills with her husband Todd, and she's been a resident on the Outer Banks for thirty-five years. Sue has two children, Travis and Caroline, who both live in Raleigh, and Sue's passion is bowling. So, without any further ado, Sue.
Next, I'll ask Fire Chief Randy Wells to come up to introduce our newest firefighter.
Good morning, Mayor Kahoon, distinguished commissioners. I'm pleased to present to you the newest member of the Town of Nags Head Fire and Rescue, Skylar Lamberto Egan. Firefighter Lamberto Egan joins us full-time from the ranks of our volunteer program. She served our community for two years as a volunteer, and has spent two seasons serving as an ocean rescue, in our ocean rescue program. She grew up in Manio, and is a graduate of the College of the Albemarle. She will be a fine addition to our team, and we expect great things from firefighter Lamberto Egan. She was the top candidate in a very competitive process. I conducted her final interview, she just demonstrated to me that she has a passion to serve the citizens and visitors with compassion and courage, the exact values that the Nags Head Fire Rescue is looking for. Skylar, welcome before.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding the Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative Program.
Thank you. Good morning. I have the honor to introduce to the Board a resolution to rename the Town's Septic Health Initiative for Todd Kraft, the Town's Septic Health Coordinator, and more recently, Environmental Planner, for close to twenty years. Just a few brief words before I invite Bob Mueller, former mayor and Chair of the Septic Health Initiative Committee, to elaborate on the program and Todd's contributions. Todd was a good friend, coworker, professional, and dedicated public servant, and he was dedicated to the Septic Health Initiative and the Town, and the Nags Head community. Todd was a champion for septic health and water quality, he was an educator and resource for the town and its residents, but also numerous communities throughout the state. I could go on, but nothing highlights Todd's good work and the appropriateness in establishing this legacy in his memory than the conversations that I've had over the last two months with residents, property owners, and wastewater, and water quality professionals. Without fail, anyone that had a previous relationship with Todd, whether once, or on one hundred occasions, had nothing but praise and gratitude for his contributions and service. On behalf of the staff of the Planning and Development Department, I want to thank the Mayor and Board for this action, and now I'll turn it over to Bob Mueller. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Members of the Board, staff, members of the public, I'm honored to rise today to speak about Todd Kraft and the Septic Health Initiative. Before I talk about Todd, and before, you really need to go back, well, before Todd, or BT, to understand the role of the Septic Health Initiative in the town. You go back to nineteen eighty-two, in something called the Carrying Capacity Study, one of the town's first planning documents, that identified wastewater as one of the essential elements to Nags Head's growth. And it saw that, while central sewage would allow, might allow unbridled growth undesired by the town, that failing wastewater systems were a threat to the town both economically and environmentally. It was BT, now nearly twenty years ago, when then-Mayor Renee Kahoon appointed the Septic Health Initiative Committee. I was honored to chair it, along with Webb, Bruce Bortz, Dave Ochsmith, and a number of other residents. We consulted with some national experts who just happened to be in Raleigh at NC State. We looked at the town's legal limitations on what we could do, and we developed a multi-part program that still works today. And that program consists of four elements, a water quality testing element, to look at the state of both the surface and groundwater in the town, and try and see what role septic tanks and onsite wastewater systems are playing in that water quality. Education program, to make sure that residents and owners alike know how to interact with their onsite wastewater systems. You get a lot of folks coming down who have no idea that they're not on a central sewage system, and it's very important that they treat their systems properly. A testing program that actually went out and checked the, how people's septic systems were working, inspection program, and finally, a wastewater loan program that offered up to five thousand dollars in low-interest loans for the repair and maintenance of septic systems from homeowners who needed help in doing that. The program was adopted by the town, by the Board, around two thousand and two, and I immediately turned to Webb Fuller, in my role as mayor, and said, "Get this done. Get it done now." Took us three years to do it, we wanted it implemented in about a month. Webb said he had a person he thought would be good at it, he had no idea how good that person would be. Todd was his, was his first choice, he was working elsewhere in the town, and Webb brought Todd in to work on it, and the rest is history. Todd jumped in with both feet, he developed the educational materials. Working with consultants, he developed the standards and protocols for water quality testing. He became a certified operator, so he could properly advise people on the management and repair and maintenance of their systems. And working with the Finance Department and the manager, he convinced the local government commission to let us do loans. Local government commission seemed to think it would be great if we just gave people grants, but the concept of taxpayers actually paying back the loan was revolutionary, but we got that, he got that done too. Todd led the program through a number of major efforts, not the least of which being the Stone Environmental Analysis of Data that was completed in two thousand and five, that led to some modifications and changes in the system. Todd understood that this was a voluntary program, and as Michael said, he was great at the personal interactions. To give you an idea of just how great he was, over the course of, since two thousand and three, over forty-five-hundred septic tank inspections, twelve-hundred septic repair loans, and over half a million dollars in septic repair loans. So, an enormous amount of money put back into the system. Those are the numbers, but there are faces to every one of those numbers, and the face very often was a homeowner with a very messy bathroom or a very stinky backyard. And Todd was great at handling, at handling those, those interactions. He did it with understanding, with science, and with a great sense of humor. What made Todd so special, aside from the unique personality, native intelligence, enthusiasm, was that he really liked what he was doing. He was never happier than when he had his sludge judge in his hand, standing over an open septic tank, just waiting to see how it was going. Todd also defended and explained the program to new Board members and new superiors. I remember one time he called and wanted some little advice, and he ended up researching the loan program, because the Board wanted to cut the loan program, and we found that the loan program actually was making the town money, that there was no reason either economically or environmentally to cut back the loan program. Nags Head is recognized nationally and locally, and at the state level, as a leader in onsite wastewater. Todd was the face and the reason for that leadership. From its activation to the present, the Septic Health Initiative has protected the town environmentally and economically. Todd Kraft was the face, the arms, the legs, the feet, and the brains of that operation, and it's very difficult to separate the success of the program from the individual who ran it. The resolution you are about to consider is a wonderful way to recognize both the program and the man who built it. Tank inspection by wastewater loan, by water quality report, one at a time. I rise today to salute Todd Kraft and to urge the passage of the resolution renaming the program as the Todd Kraft Septic Health Initiative Program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Michael and Bob, for those remarks, and I would like to read, for the Board's consideration, that resolution. Whereas the Town of Nags Head and the Outer Banks community lost a valued, forward-thinking leader and generous and knowledgeable employee on September sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, with the death of Todd Davis Kraft. And whereas Todd Kraft dedicated over twenty years of public service to the Town of Nags Head, and was a tireless and passionate advocate for the Septic Health Initiative, and the understanding and mitigation of other environmental concerns facing the town. And whereas Todd Kraft took great pride and care in performing the many duties of the Septic Health Coordinator and Environmental Planner positions, helping to establish, implement, and grow the Town of Nags Head's Septic Health Initiative Program. As part of his work, Todd carried out and oversaw the septic tank inspection and pumping programs, water quality monitoring programs, and the development of the Decentralized Wastewater Management Plan. And whereas Todd Kraft valued opportunities to provide environmental education to the community, including presentations at area schools, realtor groups, and professional organizations, civic and community associations, and other municipalities interested in developing a similar program. And whereas Todd Kraft nurtured and fostered partnerships with many local organizations and education facilities, including the Coastal Studies Institute, and the OBX Field Site, North Carolina Coastal Federation, North Carolina Sea Grant, and North Carolina State University. And whereas Todd Kraft left a lasting legacy at the Town of Nags Head and its residents, leaving a positive impression on everyone who had the pleasure to work with him. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Nags Head Septic Health Initiative Program be renamed the Town of Nags Head Todd Kraft Septic Health Initiative Program in honor of his work. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the minutes of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners as a permanent record of the achievements of and respect for one of Nags Head's most dedicated employees, and that the original be presented to the family of Todd Davis Kraft with sincere sympathy and appreciation, adopted this fourth day of December two thousand and nineteen. A motion regarding that resolution would be in order?
Mayor, I'd be honored to make that motion.
Thank you, Webb. Appreciate that.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further remarks from the Board?
Well deserved.
Thank you. Having a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I would like to invite Todd's family, in particular, his children, or representatives of his children, forward to receive the resolution and plaques, and I'd invite the Board to Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Nags Head Woods Annual Report.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and Town staff. Appreciate letting me present today on the Annual Report for Nags Head Woods Preserve. I'll basically be going through slides, this basically be information from the report you've already been given earlier, I think in October. If you have any questions, feel free to ask at any slide, at any point. So, just real quick, big shout-out, Nags Head Woods hits forty years of conservation, and this really has to do with the community, the towns, and really, this goes to show, this kind of, you protect the stuff you love, and Nags Head Woods is a place that a lot of people love. From people that live here, born and raised in the woods, to up and down the East Coast and far away. So, you know, it's just, it's just amazing to see a place like that grow first, and be there and be able to offer it, you know, not only for the conservation value, but for the recreation value as well. So, I'm just gonna go over visitor services, outreach, community, conservation, restoration, biology, beyond Nags Head Woods. Any point, any questions, please feel free to ask. So, visitor services. I just wanted to start off with, last year at this time, most of the trails were underwater, it was a pretty wet year. Things dried up in April, but this is just an example of these interdunal ponds, and they hold as much water as we get from rain. So, sometimes the ponds are completely dry, and sometimes they're so wet that bridges go underwater. Visitor services, you know, this outreach, this kind of talks about anything from just people having access to the trails, to some of the community parks that we do with hikes and things of that nature. One of the really big things and neat things that Jennifer Gilbert, who works with me, did, and been working on, we got, we got a grant from the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and a year or so ago, we talked about the reprinting of the book, when we were neighbors, and all that stuff, working together, and it talked about the history and living in the woods. And so, Jennifer came up with this idea of actually audio, making an audio tour that goes down the Roanoke Trail, and it went active in September. That's an example of the sign, so basically, you could either dial a number, or you could do a QRS things, and what you get in that is you get not only someone reading some parts of the book and talking about it, but you actually get some of the family members talking from some of the tapes that were recorded back in nineteen eighty-four when we did this. So, it's a really neat way to kind of talk about the history and the living in the woods. There's like fourteen different stops along the Roanoke Trail, so if you haven't visited, please come out, check it out. We've had, so far, since the opening in September, over a thousand hits on the pages, and this is both, like I said, this can be a dial-in, as you can see on that, or you can just put your phone to it and it pulls it up. I would suggest maybe bringing a headset sometimes to hear it, 'cause sometimes, some of the audio things are a little bit low, just from the, from the history of those things, the older tapes, but it's still a really neat way to experience in two different levels. We've had some, we actually just had someone leave an audio thing, so you can actually leave responses to this, and we had someone that's a longtime resident of Nags Head, and said they just really enjoyed hearing this stuff. And so, that was great, so it's a way for people to respond back to us as well, through the link. And one of the other things, we had, just recently, last week or so ago, we had Rad and Margie Tillett come back and walk the trail, and Rad, his grandparents lived back on the Roanoke Trail, and he talked about his visiting, and they walked on trail. So, at some point, some of his inserts and things of this hike should be on Dare TV, and it was just a really good time to have them back, and they're talking about their, their memories, and their family being a part of the woods. So, I look, I look forward to seeing that as well, and just want to throw that out there, and let you guys know that's coming. Outreach and community. We had, we had actually, because it was a dry summer, we had eighty-two different people show up to do hikes, the free hikes that we offer back in Nags Head Woods. We did a, we did, offered a hike down the Roanoke Trail, and it's free to the public, general public, whoever shows up. Weather was pretty good this year, it was dry, so we had a lot of people show up. Last year, not as much, so it's kind of just fluctuates in attendance and things like that, but that was really great, just to be able to offer that, and for most part, we were having like ten people show up or more come into those things. We've had a couple of different events, from Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce, doing some leadership stuff back in, using Nags Head Woods, Wings Over Water Event, Currituck High School AP Biology class back in there, so we've intermixed with different schools and different other agencies to be able to use the woods. We had a really neat Earth Day event, which you can kind of see a picture in the bottom corner there, but we had a local falcon ear come out there and talk about falcon earing and some of the helps like that stuff, and so that was a really good event as well. And just other partner events, working with Coastal Studies Institute, Jockeys Ridge, and National Wildlife Resource Commission. So, other outreach things, kind of mentioned the Doug Potter and the Earth Day thing. Doug Potter is also, is a teacher at Nags Head Elementary School. We had about fifty volunteers work over five hundred hours back last year, helping with anywhere from cleanup stewardship stuff, from trail maintenance, to working on invasive species. We also had U.S. Coast Guards come out and help be another part of the groups. Appalachian State has returned every year for about ten years now, and they'll be back this spring. Great university to work with, we've really enjoyed having them come out and help and be a part of the woods, and I think they're starting to enjoy coming out, and other kids are telling other kids to come out here and visit, and it's a great way for them to experience the Outer Banks and experience the woods. And they work hard, no matter what the weather is. Just thirty-six years of Nags Head Woods' race. HDTV had a little bit of Nags Head Woods and hiking in the trail on their TV shows, so a little bit ways that information has gotten out about the Preserve. Kind of roll into, you know, the biology, the restoration, conservation efforts. Last year, we did about three hundred acre marsh burn, control burn, we worked with the North Carolina Forest Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they partnered with us to be able to get these burns off safely. This is both to reduce the fuel loads in those marshes, to prevent wildfires from escaping if we were to have one, reduce fuel, and there's also, it helps with diversity and things within our marsh systems as well. Been working with a Duke Masters student, and we're using drones to look at mapping the habitat types, and look at habitat type changes over time. This is just an example of one of the drones they have, it's kind of neat, it reminds me of, if you ever had those foam gliders that you could put together, and you could toss them, it's made out of the exact same foam, and he basically, it's hooked to a laptop, he programs the route, and basically turns it on, shakes it back and forth, runs, and throws it, and it takes off, and it follows this track, and alls he does is watch it from his laptop, and then it returns back to its home base. Pretty neat. I had not experienced this type of drone work before, so it was really neat to watch this go on. This is working with a Masters program through the Duke Marine Lab, and the stuff that we're looking at right now is looking at shoreline changes, and then looking at, hopefully, if we can map out and identify the different habitat types from marsh to swamp wetland for, maybe, over years, we can use this tool to, to establish change. Whether does it grow, span, do we lose tree canopy, so this is all new work with drones, and so we're, we're kind of a pilot project. Nags Head Woods is an ideal location, the size, it being just over a thousand acres, and the fact that it has changes so abruptly allows for us to look at this and start, start mapping these things out, and try to understand how drones can be an effective way of monitoring. The good thing about this is that it covers a lot of area in a quick amount of time, and it also doesn't rely on us stomping through the wetlands and places like that, and so, we're able to get this up, and if this works, and we kind of establish a protocol, this could be used in other locations and coastal habitats as well. A lot of words up there, but basically, this is about the deer management program that's been going on since ninety-five. As you know, we get anywhere from thirty to forty registered hunters, this year, we have around thirty-eight registered hunters. The hunting has definitely dropped off as far as harvest, and the amount of hours that they put in last year, but that fluctuates from weather and what hunters have the time and ability to do. This year, we've actually harvested more deer already than last year, so every year's different, and I just bring these numbers to you. The one thing I can always say is that this does allow for local hunters to have the ability in place to come and hunt in Nags Head Woods, and it does help with stewardship efforts in managing deer herds. These are just, once again, a lot of words, but the three main points is, we're still working on invasive plant control within Nags Head Woods. We just actually acquired just over a ten acre parcel in the past year to add to Nags Head Woods. And we work with the state program in, in monitoring water quality behind Nags Head Woods, so that they could do the submerged aquatic flyovers that they do every year, and so we were one of the places, we went out every day, we tested the clarity of the water and things like that, so that the state would, would know whether in that area, they would be able to fly over and actually be able to take the imagery that they would need to, to map submerged aquatic vegetation. And these are four different bullets, this is all the stuff that kind of comes out of Nags Head Woods office. The fact that a lot of my time goes to managing Nags Head Woods, but we're also involved in far-reaching outside of this area in the northeast region, and by having an office in this area allows for the Nature Conservancy to work in other projects, from looking at hydrologic restoration, the dismal swamp area, up towards Virginia-North Carolina line, working with local oystermen and marine fisheries, looking at better management of the oyster harvesting, and getting data from local fishermen. I worked on structures to remove culverts on the Roanoke River to improve spawning habitat for nagermuss fish. So, this is, just kind of expands beyond just Nags Head Woods and the conservation work we're doing. That's my presentation for this morning. If you have any questions about any of this, anytime, if you ever want to come down and check out the Roanoke Trail, happy to take you guys out. Thank you.
Aaron, I'll ask the Board members if anybody has any questions or comments.
A comment. I'd like to thank you for twenty years of dedicated service to the woods.
Thank you. It's been my honor. Hopefully, another twenty more.
Well, thank you. I really like the, I run a lot back in the woods, and, and as do a lot of people, and really enjoy it, and I really appreciate the kind of light touch that's applied to the nice balancing of access and amenities and, and the nature of the woods. It's, it's a spectacular, beautiful place, and frankly, not enough people really know it's, even though it's there still. So, anyone else?
I could go on for a long period of time, but people may not know, but much of the woods was slated for development, including a golf course, so there were times when a presentation like this would have been met with a huge outcry of, "What are you trying to do?" And I think we did the right thing, in partnering with the Nature Conservancy, and partnering with the Nature Conservancy to manage the woods, and I think it's been a great outcome for not only Nags Head, but all of Dare County.
Here, here.
So, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. The next item on our, on our agenda is presentation of the two thousand and nineteen Earl Murray Junior Employee of the Year.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have present with us the nominees that you heard from their department heads on, at your November sixth meeting. They, each of the department heads gave you a very compelling and strong justification as why each one of these employees should be chosen. as why each one of these employees should be chosen as Employee of the Year. Represented the town today is for their departments, we have Deputy Fire Chief Shane Height, Police Officer J.C. Mitchell, Sanitation Superintendent Ricky Spencer, Code Compliance Officer Ed Snyder, and our tax collector Linda Bittner. Each one of these employees are deserving. I'm very much appreciative of the work that they do for the town, that they do for our citizens. There's, there's about 104 more just like them. But these obviously have excelled and they've been chosen for good reason. So the board had a very tough decision, Mr. Mayor. I'd leave it up to you to announce the, this year, 2019 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year.
Well, what I'd like to do is ask the, one, I want to say what an outstanding class of nominees this was. When we went into closed session to consider them, I think almost all of the board members remarked on the, on the strength of this, on the strength of this class. And, you know, even, even then, someone, someone does rise to the occasion and, and we were able to find consensus to choose one of those. Before we say who that was, I'd like to ask the, the board if they have any other remarks before we invite, before we make the announcement and then invite them up for presentation and photograph. Anybody else?
Only, it's the hardest, one of the hardest, we all deal with budgets, we all deal with lots of different issues throughout the year, but this is personal.
Yes.
This deals with a lot of great employees, a lot of great nominees, and it's a hard decision.
It is. It is. I'm going to invite the, the award winner up and then we will come around for a photograph. And I'd like to also, at that point, have the remaining nominees come up and join us for a photograph as well. But this year, we are very honored to present the Earl, 2019 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award to Mr. Ricky Spencer. Before you go, I'd like to invite the other nominees to come up and join us for one more photograph.
in making those nominations and thank you again to all of those nominees. The next item on our agenda is a presentation regarding the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here. Of course, this is the fourth year that we've been able to come before you and we, we thank you for making it available. I've got some people that I brought with me today. Number one is my treasurer, Sam Ballard. He's probably the most important fellow because he holds the first strings. You know about that, don't you? We this year also made a partnership with the Cat Five Jeep Club. And I brought the president of the Cat Five Jeep Club, Mr. Rich Paul and his wife Marie with us. They have been an outstanding partnership for us. And that's one of the things that we have learned with this toy run is that it takes partnerships to make it work. I'm gonna try not to be too long, but it, it's kind of wordy here. One of the greatest supporters that we have is Vertigo Tattoo in Manns Harbor. They make their facility available to us and we hold various events there. Our main purpose and our main goal is to raise money and gifts for underprivileged kids in Dare County. We've been pretty successful at this. One of our other supporters is Johnny Waters. You're gonna see a video that he actually wrote the song, our theme song for us this year. He's been a great partner. We have local motorcycle clubs, Dare County Sheriff's Department, and local municipalities. And that's why we're here today is to present an appreciation plaque to your police chief. They help us every year. This is the fourth year we've had the event and we've not had any incidents in any of the four years, no accidents of any type. And a lot of credit on that goes to the police departments. Give you a little history about the toy run. Our first year, like I said, it's four years. Our first year, we raised $14,000. We bought Christmas for 400 kids. Second year, we raised $25,000 and bought Christmas for 534 kids. Last year, we raised $32,000 and bought Christmas for over 600 kids. This year, we're projecting to finish with raised monies over $42,000. If you look at those four year, at that four year period, that's over a 300% increase in, in toys and monies that we've been able to raise. It's because of the giving community that we have in Dare County. Nagshead's a major player in that. We have a lot of businesses and the municipality itself that help us out. We also provide scholarships to children. We started it last year, graduating seniors. We make those available to three geographical areas of Dare County, Manio on the mainland, Hatteras Island, and the Northern Beaches. Our first year, we did three $500 scholarships. This year, we've raised them to $1,000. So we're doing pretty good as far as the toy run. We also participate in other events, charity events, and we, we participate in the Manio Christmas Parade, St. Patrick's Day Parade, and all of that's to raise awareness of what we do. This year, we had a rather large honor of being invited to go to the Fifth Annual Coastal Virginia Car Show, Custom Car Show. They wanted to put motorcycles in that show and last year, they tried to do that, they had six motorcycles. So I got a phone call and said, hey, you think you can help us get some motorcycles to go to the show? We rounded up about 15 motorcycles here locally from all the different towns. We also had four custom choppers come in from New York City. We had three custom choppers come in from Florida. We went up representing Dare County. We took five of six awards. We brought them back home. So we did, we did a great job. Those are just some of the things that we're able to accomplish by having these partnerships with the Cat Five Jeep Club and the towns and so forth in the area. I'm gonna shut up for a minute and I'm gonna play the video because it's pretty good. So if you could roll that for us. Hope y'all enjoy this. We're pretty excited about that. Rich did our, our video and he also did our drone work for us and he put together a nice package for us to be able to present. Another event, just to show how things dovetail, another event that supported us is Garage Band Charities, which puts on the OBX Custom Rod and Car Show, which will be coming up in May. Y'all are pretty heavy sponsors of that as well. They help us great. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to call up your police chief to make a presentation to him.
Please do.
We certainly appreciate the support and the excellent work that you guys do for us because it, it's just made it phenomenal for us to be able to come through your town, not have any incidents in four years. Y'all guys have just been spectacular and we thank you so much.
Well, pass it on. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us. And we'll be back next year to tell you about more.
That's wonderful. Thank all of you for your work on that great charity. Don't you love those BMW riding highway patrol guys too? They're pretty awesome. And, and the car show that's coming up is a really great event too. I attended that last year, it was very nice. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is the 2020 Census Partnership Resolution. The census is an incredibly important event in our nation. It guides how representatives are elected, how monies are allocated. And Michael, do you have comments on this?
Just very briefly, though, I think this is to acknowledge the board's support for this, but also to raise awareness within the town, the importance of the census, as the mayor indicated. A lot of the funds that we depend on are allocated based on census numbers, accurate census numbers. But not just that, a lot of decisions made by private entities are based on census and accurate census information and, including healthcare decisions. So I think it's very important that we continue to raise awareness about the importance of the census and responding to the census accurately.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to highlight that, we will consider this resolution, which I will, will read for the board's consideration. This is for the 2020 Census Partnership. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a complete count of the population and provide a historic opportunity to shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. And whereas the town of Nagshead is committed to ensuring that every resident is counted. And whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based in part on census data and housing. And whereas census data help determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and are necessary for an accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas information from the 2020 Census and American Community Survey is vital for economic development and increased employment. And whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. And whereas a united voice from business, government, community-based and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 census message to reach more of our residents. And whereas the census count requires extensive work and the Census Bureau requires partners at the state and local levels to ensure a complete and accurate count. And whereas the town of Nagshead and its appointed Complete Count Committee will bring together a cross-section of community members who will utilize their local knowledge and expertise to reach out to all persons of our community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Nagshead is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau and the state of North Carolina and will support the goals for the 2020 census and will disseminate 2020 census information. Will encourage all town residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 census and increase participation. And provide CCC members and census advocates to speak to town and community organizations and support census takers as they help our town complete an accurate count and strive to complete an accurate count of all persons within our borders adopted at the town of Nagshead, North Carolina this fourth day of December 2019. Having heard the resolution, a motion would be in order?
Submit.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item is bittersweet. It is personal privilege for outgoing board members and we have an outgoing board member in Susie Walters. And Susie has some comments and a presentation before we receive comments from the board and, and provide her a small token of our appreciation. So, Susie?
Thank you. Good morning. First, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Renee Kahoon and, on her reelection, and incoming Commissioner Kevin Brinkley on his election to this board. Both will serve this board and Nagshead well, as they know much of the history, have served for many years as board member and staff member, and both have a deep love for our community. It has truly been my honor and privilege to serve on this board. I've had the opportunity to work with three mayors, Bob Oaks, Bob Edwards, and Ben Kahoon. Each has a different management style, but all have been great leaders. I have also had the opportunity to work with the late Doug Romali, Anna Sadler, John I have also had the opportunity to work with the late Doug Romali, Anna Sadler, John Ratzenberger, and Marvin DeMers, in addition to working with Mike Sears, Webb Fuller, and Renee on the current board. I've learned a great deal from each member and for that, I am thankful. I've also had the pleasure of working with our board attorney, John Lighty, who provides thoughtful legal guidance to keep us out of trouble. My greatest honor, privilege, and enjoyment comes from working with the public to resolve challenges and develop plans and opportunities for our future. The most rewarding times on this board have been working with our community to develop Doughty Park and our comprehensive land use plan. While the committee structure and community input can be time-consuming for board members, citizens, and staff, I believe the outcome often provides better long-term solutions for Nagshead. It has worked extremely well on the Business Committee, Doughty Park, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and the creation of our Unified Development Ordinance. I hope this board will continue to engage the public in long-term planning issues. The true work regarding policies and decisions made by the Board of Commissioners is carried out by our town manager, Cliff Ogborne, and his staff. Their dedication to our town and our community is exemplary. While I do not know each staff member personally, I see the evidence of their hard work every day. They keep our town running smoothly and in tip-top shape inside and out. We are all incredibly fortunate to have such a professional group of dedicated, hard-working individuals. I may be biased, but I think we have the best beach community on the Outer Banks. There are many challenges and opportunities in the future. One of our greatest challenges, aside from seismic testing and offshore oil and gas drilling, is the effects of climate change and sea level rise. While our septic tank initiative is forward-thinking, it cannot prevent the challenges we face with large rain events and sea level rise. We need to look at alternatives to ensure our water quality and quality of life remain safe and secure. This will not happen overnight, so it is imperative that sustainable solutions be developed in the very near future to protect our community and our livelihood. Much of what makes communities great is the ability to look forward, to plan for what lies ahead, to set in place the mechanisms necessary to impact what our community will look like 20-plus years from now. The Comprehensive Plan and Unified Development Ordinance were developed to assist everyone in this endeavor. While it is important to know the history of previous decisions in Nagshead, it is more important to have a vision for our future, and I know each of you is up to the challenge. With that being said, I leave you with a video and a song, and I would like to thank all of you for your kindness, your patience, and your support over the past eight years.
So, before we let you go, I want to ask the board members if they have any remarks at this time, and I'll start with the person I think has served with you the longest, and that's Renee.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. You've brought great contributions to the town, thoughtful insight as to the issues. While everybody doesn't always agree, we try to work it out, and you've brought a lot of positive energy to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the person who's probably known you the longest or the next longest, that's Webb Fuller.
Well, I guess the first thing I'd say is I don't think you're biased in your love for Nagshead. I do think we are the best. I think it's because of the people like you, and you in particular with the leadership you provided to the town. And like I said, we always don't get along, but we seem to work things out, and when we leave the room, we all still pretty much love each other. And I certainly appreciate it every minute I've had working with you, and thank you for the bananas.
I forgot it. I can't believe it.
Thank you, Susie.
Mike?
I've been the shortest by all means, but it's been a privilege and an honor, and I love your insight. Even though sometimes we don't always agree, I do appreciate you looking at other angles and getting it through us. So, good luck. Yep.
And I want to thank you for your leadership, for your mentorship. I think the thing that I find remarkable about you, I think of myself as a fairly dispassionate kind of leader. You are a passionate leader. You feel things in your heart, no matter what they are, whether it's the best thing for the employees, or for the citizens, or for the beach, or for us. You can tell, you just don't think that you really feel it, and you feel it strongly, and that's the thing that really, that's kind of passion is something that's missing in leadership, too much, and I appreciate that about you very much.
It's been my pleasure.
So, now, we have a couple of gifts, and I'm going to ask the board to come up front, and you to come up front, so we can take a picture while we do this.
Don't make me cry.
So, if y'all have...
I don't know where I was going there. I just didn't know that.
I thought we weren't supposed to come this far.
Yeah. So, we'll get lost.
So, we have the ceremonial pen for you, but we also got for you, I want to take the ribbon off so that everybody can see this, a customized gift for you, which is a piece of pottery, which reads on this side, "In recognition of years of service to the town of Nagshead, Susie Walters, 2011-2018," with the town logo.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you all very much. I don't miss you, but I'm sure I'll see you again.
Now, the next item on our agenda is reorganization of the board, and I will ask your clerk to report on the results of the election. Thank you.
Good morning. The official results of the November 5th, 2019 municipal election are as follows. For the two commissioner positions, Kevin Brinkley received a total of 584 votes, Renee Cahoon received a total of 536 votes, and Keith Sawyer received a total of 242 votes. And I will now provide the oaths of office to Commissioner Cahoon and Kevin Brinkley.
I state your name, DuSalle, I swear.
Aye, today, convene, DuSalle, I swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
As Commissioner.
As Commissioner.
Of the town of Nagshead.
Of the town of Nagshead.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I state your name, DuSalle, I swear.
I, Kevin Brinkley, DuSalle, I swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
As Commissioner of the town of Nagshead.
As Commissioner of the town of Nagshead.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Congratulations.
The board will be in a brief recess before we reconvene for reorganization of the board. Thank you. Thank you all very much. The board has returned to order. Thank you, Commissioner, welcome Commissioner Brinkley.
Thank you, Mayor.
To the board. The next item on our agenda is the selection of a mayor pro tem, and a nomination would be in order. Somebody has one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mike Sears as mayor pro tem.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to elect Mike Sears, mayor pro tem. Mike? You ready, willing, and able?
Ready, willing, and able.
All right, great. Having a motion and a second then, a vote would be in order. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mike, appreciate your willingness to serve, and the clerk will administer the oath of office.
I, Michael Sears, the town of Salle, I swear. And I am duly elected mayor pro tem.
Have I been duly elected mayor pro tem?
By the board of commissioners of the town of Nagshead.
By the board of commissioners of the town of Nagshead.
At an official meeting held on December 4th, 2019.
At an official meeting held on December 4th, 2019.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
As mayor pro tem of the town of Nagshead.
As mayor pro tem of the town of Nagshead.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is public comment, and I'll ask Mr. Whitey to handle this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners will receive comments from members of the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address any concerns or comments that they have to the board as a whole. It's not an opportunity for dialogue. The board does not ordinarily respond to public comment, but it does allow people to address their concerns to the board. We also ask that people not address their concerns or engage in any interaction with just single commissioners, but if you would please address your remarks to the whole board. So, if anybody wishes to provide public comment, if you'll please go to the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then provide your remarks to the board. Any takers?
I think it's just us chickens here.
I think so. In light of that, we will close the public comment.
Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda that you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director. Mike?
So, just briefly, unless the board has any questions, this is something, I wanted to update the format of the monthly report that we've been giving to the board, at least since I've been here, and this is a format that I've used in the past, and I think it's helpful to lay out a lot of the different activities that we're working on, and especially if the board doesn't wish for anything to be specifically discussed on the agenda. For instance, for the last previous two quarters, we've given you the permit turnaround report, and we've given that to you as an attachment here, and again, unless the board wishes to discuss this in detail, it's more for information purposes, the entire content of the memo, but I'm happy to address anything that's contained in the memo.
Great. I'm gratified to see continued improvement on the permit turnaround. I think we probably all are. I'll ask the board if they have any questions or comments. Mike?
Michael, what's the timeframe on being online permit processing?
So...
Hundred percent.
Yeah. So, now that we have, you can search the permits, the public can access and search permits, granted only going back to January, because they can only use the Munis platform to search that. I expect that we'll have the ability for people to do online trade permits, probably by February, March, would be my estimate. I think we had some training in early November with Munis. They came here, we had two days of training, and I think it helped address a lot of questions and issues that staff was having, and so now that we've moved past that, I think we can start to work on making everyone comfortable with that online module.
So, full permitting by?
I think part of the issue with that is the submission of documents and materials and plans, and one of the things I want to clarify is what our responsibility is for receiving hard copy of plans, and I know that, and I do want to caution us in doing that, because Curituck recently had to switch over their servers, or the way they collect online plan submissions, because their servers were not able to handle it, and they had switched to a cloud system. So, I do want to make sure that with our IT staff that we have appropriate infrastructure to do that. But I can imagine, you know, May, April or May timeframe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cahoon? Okay. All right. Thank you. I do follow closely what Curituck does with their system there, and they've been on it for a while. They continue to iron out a glitch every now and then, and I was aware of their switch over to the cloud server, and it's a question I want to think about as we work toward budget time too. If we will need cloud space, will that, would that become a budget consideration at some point?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brinkley?
The workshops that you mentioned for the home builders and real estate association, sometime between before May, when the...
Oh, yeah. That's going to be in early 2020.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner, forward.
Just want to confirm something. We talk about trades.
Yeah.
In the process, like HVAC and plumbing are allowed to go in now before electric. Not everything is held. I mean, the point is dried-in, what is dried-in, this, that, the other, but two of the trades are allowed to go in before the third trade. Is that right or not?
You know, I'd have to talk to the building inspector to confirm that. I believe some of the, there's been some clarification on the drying in with respect to electrical, and that there may not be as stringent of a requirement for that as may have been applied in the past.
I understand the need for certain dried-in with electrical.
Yes, sir.
But plumbing and HVAC, usually what happens is you let those two go in first. They're done, and then electric goes in. If you allow them all at the same time, there tends to be a cluster.
And some of the, some of the issues with the online permitting is the prerequisites, and whether or not, from a process standpoint, because I believe Curituck may allow for the permits to just be issued upon application, whereas that is slightly different than our application process, where a review, at least a review, may be required. So, that's, I think that speaks to that in terms of the sequence and what you're able to apply for and how it's processed, and that there may be prerequisites to certain trade permits.
Then, totally different, and I know we'll get a presentation in January, but how is the response coming for short-term rental stays, sign-up coming up long, just as sort of an information thing?
Sure. I think I noted in here that we have, as of today, actually, 20... I think I noted in here that we have, as of today, actually, 28 properties registered. We are working, Roberta and I are working to do a publication to notify people, to remind people of the registration requirement. The way it works is if they don't register prior to December 31st, there's no requirement that they do, but if they don't, they have to absolutely register prior to renting the unit in 2020. If you've registered prior to December 31st, then you don't need to register again until September 1st of 2020. And that's the message. We want to make sure it's clear to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be old business and.
Do we need to adopt the consolidated fee schedule or not?
I'll ask Cliff.
Is this in our packet, consideration of fee schedule?
I think you did that in the consent. That was done in the consent.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Well, it was in the packet. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is old business and items tabled from previous meetings, and the first is the update on the Little Bridge.
Mr. Mayor, there, nothing formal to present here. I've had, been in communication with Jerry Jennings, the Division One DOT engineer, about some, and explained to him the Board's wish and desire was to be able to remove what's been put in place, because the other solutions that the Boards recommended have not been implemented or received by DOT. DOT isn't going to remove what's in place without the prohibition of, or prohibiting fishing on the north side of the pier. I believe that there's, what they would be agreeable to, or could support, and the Boards talked about, instead of a motion-activated crosswalk, that it actually be a pedestrian-activated crosswalk, so that hopefully that would eliminate the wind and the rain from activating the Also, maybe some signage at the push button that explains to the pedestrian crossing that is safety, more or less, that they need to make sure that traffic is stopped, all lanes have stopped before they attempt to cross. I had inquired about, since the push button would then activate the lights, that whether or not we could have a sign that ahead of the crosswalk that said, "When light flash and pedestrian in crosswalk." Because, just as a stronger warning, but the concern there for DOT was that if the lights, for some reason, the reliability of whether or not those lights will work, and whether, if they flash and there is nobody there. So I think they could support the first two, but were not supportive of the latter.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I know the Board, I know at least Commissioner Cahoon has some thoughts about this. You know, and the Board has been, made a number of requests and taken a number of actions on the Little Bridge in the interest of safety. My sense is perhaps that what we'd like to have is what the last thing that was installed worked, and worked for a while, because it has not worked since it was installed, and to give that time before we make further request. And I think perhaps having the signs work with a pedestrian-controlled button, and they need to make the signs, they need to make the lights work. I mean, we paid for the lights. The lights need to work.
I would agree with the Mayor. I think that it needs to be a push button, but quite frankly, at what point does DOT declare their vendor that it provided the lights noncompliant? If the lights don't work, to me, it's a vendor issue, and DOT either needs to get rid of the vendor, and get a new vendor. I mean, there's no excuse for the lights not working. That's a, that's a performance issue from their vendor.
Just interestingly, they were out there yesterday working on the lights.
Yeah, because it had been raining the day, yeah, the day before. They just, I mean, to me, it's just unconscionable that lights don't work, except when it rains.
Lights make, the rain makes them work.
Yeah, the rain makes them work. I mean, that's, that's just really bad work.
Yeah. Yep. So Kevin, any thoughts about this?
Just the fact that, you know, we put the lights up in 2014. If you look at the chronological order, crosswalk in 12, Refuge Island in 13, and then we did the lighting 14 and 18. And then, in the years prior to August 2014, no records of any accidents. But yet since August 2014, a total of 18 accidents, one involving a pedestrian. Something needs to change. The lights working.
There's always been fishing on the north side of the bridge.
Regardless of whether DOT tries to prohibit it that or not, I think Commissioner Fuller said it, they're going to fish on that north side regardless.
Mike?
No, that's it.
So if I'm saying this correct, if I'm not saying this correct, that the Board's request at this time would be to switch to a pedestrian-activated signal to make the lights work when a pedestrian is crossing, and to provide additional signage that would be appropriate to indicate whatever language they want to use to indicate the function of the lights for drivers who approach, and whatever language they think is appropriate to warn the pedestrian who's about to cross. But the primary request is that the lights work the way they were intended.
May I ask one more question? Did we ever get any knowledge back about if there's disagreement about the speed limit that it defaults to 45? Is that still in their manual or not?
Well, I don't know. And I have asked again in that same conversation where we are, and on the request for the 45 mile per hour, and response was that it's still something they're researching. So based on that, I would think that it doesn't revert, because otherwise it would have to. If it was in the code, it would, I would think it would have to. But I'll inquire again and ask that question directly. Why doesn't it default to 45 at our request? And is that in the code?
So if you would request that, and then give us a status report on the, if you can inquire of them when they think a decision will be made about the 45 mile per hour speed limit. And I will report to the Board that I have spoken with the Mayor-elect of Kittle Hill, Ben Sproul, about reducing the speed in the portion of their town that's above 45, so that there's a consistent speed limit all the way through both towns. And he's going to make inquiries of his Board after they're seated.
Excellent.
The next item on our agenda is a report on the following projects, the ADA study, workforce housing plan, and building access security. Andy?
Hey. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Last month, the Board discussed these three projects being performed by our on-call architect, DJG. We indicated to the Board that we were trying to move forward with the ADA study. This is a study to look at our town buildings and facilities for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's something that DOT is requesting that we do as a part of receiving Pell Bill funds. This is something that they're being asked to do because it's part of the federal highway program, and the Pell Bill money is essentially passed through money from that program down to them. And so they need to make sure that municipalities that receive it are compliant with the ADA guidelines. And what they're asking people to do is prepare transition plans for their facilities. And so we're trying to comply with that request through this study. We've gotten the architect to give us a scope and a cost, and I've provided that in the report. The ADA study is about $23,000. Originally, this was $37,000, and we talked to the architect about reducing the scope, seeing ways that we could either leverage the work with the other projects we're doing, and the site visits and the meetings, or also taking pieces of this ourselves. And so that's where we've come to the $22,000 scope, and we hope that that's something that the Board would be agreeable to. Workforce Housing, Planning Director Michael Zaner went over the scope for that with the Board, I believe, last month, and we are moving forward with that. I think the Board did ask us to move forward with that. So that leads us to the final effort, which is the building security project. It's something that was not budgeted in this year's budget, and we've been meeting with our Safety Committee for, you know, at least six months, talking about this issue, not just physical security improvements, but also soft measures, things we can do to make sure that our people are safe. We've had our Town Hall facility for at least 20 years now, and obviously, that was designed with some sort of security in mind, but we think this gives us a good opportunity to look at that one more time, and not just Town Hall, but other facilities, Public Works, and the two fire stations, to make sure we're doing all we can to protect the people that come into, that come into the building, protect the staff that are there working. And the architect has given us a scope for that study. It's essentially $15,000, looking at three phases, fairly simple. Phase one would be to actually come and inventory everything, look at the building plans for the facilities, determine where the access control points are, the work zones for employees are, and just really get a sense of what we have. The second phase would be to be able to take that information and look at different alternatives for the improvements to the facilities, not just physical barriers, but other types of access controls, as well as cameras and other things that could help us with security. One of the things they had suggested since we met last month was that they could take us to a facility that they designed with a security consultant, and walk our staff through the facility, go over how it was designed, the thought process that was used, and then take that information back as we're reviewing these alternatives to help us think about this a little bit better. And that was included in the scope. It's a small piece of the effort. We would actually travel to Virginia to look at a building they designed. We think it would be beneficial to do that. It helps us educate ourselves. We've been trying to do that. I mentioned that we had staff from Dare County present to us some of the controls that they instituted in their buildings to help with security, and this just further adds to staff knowledge about these types of issues. So with that said, we are essentially asking the Board to approve a budget amendment of, I think, $15,909 to allow us to pursue investigating these security measures in our buildings. And that's what's before you today.
Before we consider that, can you tell us a little bit about work that the Committee, the Police Chief, and some others are doing also with regard to looking at security issues?
Right. That is something, the Safety Committee's been looking at some things, and then the Police Chief has just now started to work on updating a campus security policy with other staff in the Police Department, the Deputy Chief, and others. You know, it's essentially how we look at people who come to the building, how we control their access, how we recognize behaviors that could be problematic, and what is our response to those behaviors. And then looking at escalating threats, like, you know, if somebody has a firearm, or if somebody has a bomb or bomb threat, what are the staff supposed to do? And so we're working on that type of policy. And then, once we finalize that with input from others on the staff, we would do some training of that. And so I think that just shows the Board that we're trying to look at this holistically, not just looking at physical security improvements to buildings, but, you know, how we handle the situations with our staff, and making sure that everybody understands what to do. And so that work is ongoing, and, you know, we can certainly provide updates on that when we get through that exercise.
Great. Thank you. I ask Commissioner Fuller. Yes.
Just quickly, I mean, are we looking at just one building? Are we looking at Public Works, Fire, and more particularly, this building on the first Wednesday of each month?
Okay. The, good question. The scope is looking at the two fire stations, Public Works, and the Town Hall, and we can certainly look at this building. I don't think it would be problematic to look at this building as well. So that was what was intended, was the main buildings where we receive the public, and this is certainly one of those, so. Good. You know, this building is on the ADA study as well. And I don't think there are that many issues with this building, but they're going to be in here looking at it anyway.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Cahoon. Mr. Sears. Okay. Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. In that case, we would have the budget amendment before us. Remind us of that amount.
It's $46,000.
Do 16 instead of 15 in a number, if you will.
Isn't he totally asking for 40, over 46,000 with the 23 and the 15? So he's asking for 46. He's not asking for 16.
I thought they already had, I already thought they had part of that.
Well, they were moving apart last month. I mean, this is the second month in a row they've asked for studies, money for studies. The, we were only asking for the 15, 9, 10, which is what's on the screen for the building security. We're proposing to take this money from our admin facility fees, which we had money in that, to be able to do this. Maybe Amy can clarify if there's anything else, but I'm not aware of anything else we were asking.
We don't have this, do we?
Yeah, it's in. Yeah.
Yeah.
So where's the ADA money coming from? The 23, 8, the 23, 3?
That was approved with the adopted budget, in the original budget.
And then the workforce housing, 23,000?
That was also approved with the adopted budget as well.
So it's not a total of 46 as stated these projects are. It's 15,000 that you're asking for?
He was probably just adding them all together, but the only one that wasn't budgeted is the security system study. The other two were included as part of the adopted budget.
And this is to slide money from one account to the other, is the purpose of this?
I understand what you're saying now, that the memo references that 46,000. That was just a summary of the two projects that were already budgeted. That total didn't reference the building security, which wasn't a budgeted item. So the 46,000 is coming from money that you approved in the budget. The 15, 9, 10 is coming from what we're requesting. So I apologize if that.
It's just a transfer.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? In that case, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment request as presented, if staff is comfortable that 15, 9, 1, 0 is the final figure. If not, I would do more than that. Are you comfortable 15, 9, 1, 0 is the right figure?
It's the figure that was given to us by the consultant to do the scope of work that you saw.
Yes.
You know, now, obviously, you know, we're going to get into the budget, and we're going to have some recommendations, and then those would be presented to you as part of the budget.
Right.
So, and then there will probably be some additional work in order to design some of these things and prepare specifications to put out to bid, but that's not what this study looks at.
Okay. If you're comfortable 15, 9, 1, 0 addresses exactly what you asked, I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $15,910. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. New business, committee reports, and I'm going to leave Commissioner Fuller till last to talk about the Visitors Bureau meeting that we had yesterday. Commissioner Sears, anything to report?
Town Mayor's going to report on stormwater, but we haven't had any meetings.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Cahoon.
I just, if you're aware, I think media reports, as well as a brief report that I gave you on my trip to Washington, DC. Since then, I also attended the North Carolina Rural Conference for a day and a half, which was pretty informative. The one key thing that I took away, as we look at the housing study, and I'll make this comment knowing the Michaels in the room, there was a rural consultant from northeastern California, which is rural. They have big rural counties. Their counties are like the size of four of our counties. But there's a big rural area in the northeastern part of the state. They struggle with the same rural issues that we do. And there was a tech issue. They were trying to get high-speed internet throughout those rural communities. And there was a conference on the other side of the country, New York or Boston, that was going to address this. And she said, what happens very often is a town or municipality or county sends one person to a conference, and they come back with their hair on fire about whatever issues they heard about, and all the great ideas, and. they heard about and all the great ideas, and that information gets lost because one person can't, you know, can't sustain that enthusiasm and communicate all of that. And so they went to those consultants and invited them to come to their community and had provided a meal so that they could get all of the politicians in the room. And those consultants that had all this brain power about their issue all agreed to come at no charge because they already had expense accounts. They didn't even charge them for travel. They fed them, and they got their expertise presented to all of the key people in the rooms, which I thought was a great observation. And so as we go into some of these issues that we struggle to resolve, and the housing being the big one, I've argued for a while that we need to get some people from outside the room who've solved and worked on these issues to come and talk to us a little bit about this. And I thought that was a great point, at some point. Let's just invite some people to come here, and we will get some of these issues addressed, maybe more broadly. Commissioner Brinkley, you probably don't have any committee reports yet. So Commissioner Fuller?
Just briefly, the committee to look at the event site, which is an appointed committee by the Visitor Bureau, had their first meeting yesterday. If you want a really decent summary of the meeting, read Outer Banks Voice today. I think it was a fair rendering of what went on. I would believe in Mayor Cahoon is on that committee with me. I think there was a broad consensus that we want to move in a certain direction. I think there was some caution issued from NAGC head that before we just take a blank slate and develop what we want and then work backwards, that there was a caution that we need to look at what may lie in front of that in terms of what NAGC head rules and regulations are. I'll just leave that part at that unless the mayor can explain it better than I can.
No, all right.
But the other point was, we did agree to engage an engineer to at least look at the interface between what the conceptual value of the committee is and NAGC head rules. But thank you.
Yes, that's it. Okay, thank you.
And yes, the article was a fair representation of the events of yesterday. The next item on our agenda is consideration of town board and committee appointments and reappointments. We have two. We have a committee, the Arts and Culture Committee, to consider, and we have the planning board vacancies to consider. And I would ask how the board is interested in proceeding with this. I believe it's my understanding that the Arts and Culture Committee members wish to continue with their service, and that we would need to make some new appointments to the planning board. I might suggest that so that Commissioner Brinkley and all of us have an opportunity to evaluate the candidates for the planning board, that being a key appointment. And I did ask staff if there was any reason why delaying those selections until their January meeting would be problematic, and it doesn't seem to be. So my suggestion might be, if the board is willing, that we proceed with reappointment of the Arts and Culture Committee members, and that we delay appointment of the planning board members until our January meeting.
I would agree with that. I think that planning board's a really important one, and I'd like to give our newest commissioner time to fully get and think about it, and not just throw them in the water. The Arts and Committee, I'm not suggesting is any less important. It's not. But since all the members that are on there wish to be reappointed, that makes it a little bit easier.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sears or Commissioner Fuller? Any comments?
I agree with that.
Okay, great, thank you. In that case, we would need two motions. The first would be to reappoint those members to the Arts and Culture Committee.
I would make a motion that we reappoint all the eligible members to, back to the Arts and Culture Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. And then a motion would be in order to postpone the appointment of planning board members to the January meeting.
Same move.
Same.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Great, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is to consider appointment or reappointment to the Dare County Tourism Board, or a nomination, excuse me.
I apologize. I just wanted to clarify that it's, the action is to nominate because the Dare County Board of Commissioners actually does...
Actually does the appointment. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Commissioner Fuller to another two-year term. It's not a one-year term, two-year term, please.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Fuller, I trust you're willing to continue in that capacity?
Yes, I am, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, and we appreciate your service and your willingness to carry that forward. Having a nomination and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. And thank you again, Commissioner Fuller, for your willingness to serve there.
Just a point of order. I'm not sure, and I turned to the manager to ask, but I think we have to submit three names with a preferred name.
That's what it says in the email from Dare County.
And I think that's true. You have to submit three with a preferred. And usually, how the Dare County Commissioners Act is, the first name submitted should be the preferred name and state that it's preferred, and then the other two. I know in the past that another town submitted three names with the preferred candidate. The preferred candidate was not listed first, and they appointed the first name. So there is some minor protocol issues.
Okay. Let me ask, is it, and I can't remember what we did before. I thought I remembered a discussion that we said, well, heck with that, we're going to nominate the person that we want, and that's it. I think that's the discussion we had a year or two ago. What do you...
So we, that's what we did the first year I was there, anyway. When we've got it, we just put one on the list.
What it says, you know, submit three names to fill your organization's seat, or reappoint Mr. Fuller. Said to me, I think, we're safe.
That's what the letter says, email. I think you're reading it right.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Well, all right, then, issue closed. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for that clarification. Next item on our agenda is, and I'm going to ask after I introduce it, if we move this to the end of the agenda, this is a request for a closed session. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir. I do have a request for a closed session so that Ben Gallup and I can get the board updated on the status of the Richardson litigation. That discussion may take a little while, so it would be best, I think, to move that to the end of the agenda after all the other open session business has been completed. And in addition to that, I do want to congratulate Commissioner Brinkley on his success in getting onto the board, and I look forward to working with him in this capacity.
Great, thank you very much. In that case, we will take that as item 0.1 then, and do that immediately before adjournment, if the board is willing. And that would make the next item on the agenda, the town manager. Cliff?
Thank you, sir. One item, three parts. Clearly, stormwater, the stormwater projects and stormwater maintenance are two of the biggest concerns, not only for the board, but clearly for our town as a whole. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to give the board an update. First, Hunter Freeman with Withers Ravenell will report on the two of the three projects that are currently being planned and close to going out to bid in South Naxet on 1243 at 17 and a half mile post and 19 and a half mile post. And then, followed by that, I've asked the Public Works Facility Maintenance Supervisor, Mike Norris, to come up and give you a presentation of how they've been, how he has been directing and leading the maintenance program of our present infrastructure. And the third part of that is an IFLOOD app that Woods Hole, the Woods Hole Institute developed in partnership with Town and Axet and the Town and Duck that allows citizens to participate and report issues during events. So first, we'll start off with Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here again. Good to see you all. Just as a quick update to, as the town manager had mentioned, the two projects that we are getting ready to advertise for bid, I'll quickly just go through the design and where we stand on that, and talk about schedule, and then happy to have any discussion or answer any questions. So both of these are on South Old Oregon Inlet Road, on the east side of the roadway primarily. The goal here is to reduce common flooding after storm events. It is reduce that roadway to one lane of travel. There are high-water signs out there along the road, as you're all familiar, I'm sure. So that is the intent here. Both designs are fairly similar in that they employ what we're calling a French drain. Site 12, essentially between James and Junko Street, is a French drain system, which is a gravel trench with a large diameter, in this case, about a 24 to 30-inch diameter pipe in it. The intent there is to get water off the roadway faster than it currently gets off the roadway and get it down into the groundwater. We are installing an emergency, or planning to install, an emergency pump hookup along Jacob Street or near, just south of Jacob Street in the future beach access. Just a couple aerial shots. It is highly, fully residential area, number of driveways. Total length here is about 2,000 feet of French drain and pipe. This is just a snapshot along the roadway to show you, the area of our installation would generally be between the edge of pavement and the existing multi-use path. There is a section or a large portion of the multi-use path that would need to be replaced just to facilitate construction of this, as well as, in this case, 30 driveway repairs and replacements. That option was chosen in our preliminary assessment over trying to preserve those existing driveways. The driveways are not in very good shape as they are adjacent to the roadway. This gives us the opportunity to elevate the driveway slightly and create low points between the driveways to hopefully maintain their access to the residents during high-water events. And it's a less expensive option than boring, entrenching pipe under each driveway as we go along the path of the roadway. So that's the general scope of Site 12. Just a couple engineering details. On Site 13, we will use a pump, and I'll talk about that in a second. The detail on the right is our general French drain detail. So it's a very simple installation of digging a trench, backfilling it with clean gravel and a perforated pipe in the middle there, just, again, to reconnect this surface water to the groundwater table and get it into that groundwater as quickly as possible. So the performance of the system does depend on the groundwater being low enough. So in severe high tides, in overwashed situations, we may still have limited road flooding. But we, our models are showing, and we fully anticipate this, to reduce the time that water stands on that roadway to the minimum extent practical. So that is the performance. In a large storm, the most benefit here would be seen during the thunderstorm events, during the small events that have caused flooding, that really proportionally, we don't expect to flood the roadway, but they have been. That's where you'll see the most benefit from this system. This is the area where the future beach access parking is planned by the town. In the scope of this project, what we intend to do is install a, essentially a conduit, a dry pipe here with an emergency pump connection to allow the town's engineer and Public Works Department, in a time of flooding, to have an emergency pump hookup where they can pump water to the dune in case of emergency to, again, reduce the time that water stands on the roadway and reduce the overall flood time. So for the time being, that would be an emergency hookup. It is set up to be converted in the future to a wet well and permanent pump installation that could be added at a later date. So that's Site 12. Site 13, from East Hargrove down to the fire station, is a combination. There is a length of about 2,500 linear feet of, again, this French drain. That is essentially from, I have a pointer here, from the north end of the project to this point here, which is at Tides Drive. That would be the same French drain. We plan on installing a wet well and pump just south of Harvest Street, which would then connect to a force main that would pump the water to the fire station site. I'm sorry, it's French drain to here, and then a pump and force main to pump it to an area north of the fire station, which is on the west side of the road, which is currently a, this sort of racetrack-looking open area. The right-of-way extends to this, to the eastern edge of this private drive. And so we have this area within the DOT right-of-way that we can use to pump water into as infiltration. This...
Could you go back?
Yeah, this one or...
That access, no, go right there. That access road, is that not a private street?
The access road itself is a private street, I believe.
So where are you proposing putting the water?
The water would go in the grass there. If I just can go forward a couple slides. So this is the access road. We would excavate this area between here. The right-of-way goes up until about that utility post.
Okay.
So we, so this area is within the DOT right-of-way, and we would excavate that, lower that about 15 inches to create a basin that we could pump into. We have had soils tests done in this area. The infiltration rate is 15 to 20 inches an hour. There are periods of high water table that we are aware of. But we expect that area to be able to accept a pumping rate of, we're proposing 500 gallons a minute at this point, which would also reduce the potential for that water to stand on the surface for anything more than an hour. Commissioner Sears, did you have a question?
What's the water table?
The water table here, our soils tests, we had G E T Solutions do hand augers here, and it's 18 to 24 inches below the existing grade right there.
So we're risking standing water with excavation of 15 inches?
We would be lowering the elevation. They looked at seasonal high water table, which they reported that, you know, as, probably not much of a surprise, the seasonal high water table does currently get about to the ground surface here. So there may be times of standing water, yes.
How does this area relate to the area that water's currently standing in?
It is higher right now.
So we're going to lower closer to that?
We're going to lower it, but the soils in this area were very accepting to additional pumped water going on to them. The pump would be a, you know, we would set it up so the town engineer would have control of when that pump could be turned on and how long it would run. So, and we'd also have a float switch here. So if it ever did show a high level of standing water, we would not rerun the pumps. I was just highlighting this area. This is the location of, this is Harvest Drive, would be just on the left side of this. There is one residence there, and then we would propose that the wet well and pump controls be located against this existing vegetation that would screen the pump controls from the residences on the beach. We would have a timber front on that pump control panel to make it, I guess, somewhat more aesthetically pleasing from the roadway, is the best way I can put it.
If you've seen the one in Axet Acres, I believe it's similar to that.
It would be similar to that from what the road, from the view from the road. So this one, just to quantify the total here, about 2,500 linear feet of French drain, 1,300 feet of force main, 28 driveway repairs. The force main would be a horizontal directional drill, so that would not disturb the majority of driveways there, or any driveways. They would have a couple, what they call bore pits there to get the equipment in and to get that drill started. And we're proposing a pumping rate of 500 gallons a minute. So that would, that would de-water this trench in a matter of hours after a storm.
Time frame?
So the schedule right now is we, the plans are in review by DOT. I've communicated with the town manager, and he's been pushing DOT, as have I, to get their comments back. There are two reasons for the DOT review. That's, it's in their right-of-way, first of all, so we know we need an encroachment agreement. And the second is that we are trying to preserve the potential for future funding from DOT for these projects, which they have said may be a bit... for these projects, which they have said may be available depending on how they work out the current DOT financial situation. And so we want to make sure that we design this and build it in a way, and bid this project in a way that preserves that funding potential. So that is in current review. As soon as we get their comments back, which might be any time between now and when we get the comments, the, if the comments are minor, we feel like we could advertise this project for bid immediately and get it out onto the open market for contractors to bid on it. If we took that road, we would then issue a bid addendum to address the DOT minor comments and correct the bid documents. If the comments are major, we will work as quickly as we can to get that out, but that may be a day or two or up to a week from when we get those comments. So advertise for bid could be any time between the end of this week and, you know, I don't know what the back end of that is, other than we are pushing as hard as we can to get DOT to give us their blessing.
I'm thinking about the calendar.
So if we advertise for bid, if we were able to advertise on Friday, then we may be able to open the bids before the holidays. That would put us at a probably February first start date. If we have to wait until even the end of next week, we're probably opening the bids in January because of the holiday schedule. And that would put us to a mid-February start date anticipated.
And construction time projected for these?
I believe in our bid documents right now, we are allowing eight weeks for full completion of it.
As long as we're not going into the May, late May timeframe.
Before the end of the-
Yeah. Absolutely, but-
Or before mid-May timeframe.
The goal would still be to be completed, you know, before the end of April.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments from board members?
Okay.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
That'll segue right into the maintenance that Mike and his guys and girl have been doing for the past year.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. Since inception of the, in 2019 and 2020, our budget discussions, we set our goals and objectives and responsibilities for this year. Puts the drink, the town's drainage system in a, in a, in a system to where we would address it twice a year. It also allowed, we asked for a new employee, which we were granted, which came on board in July. We broke up the town into three sections for maintenance reasons. There's Zone One, Two, and Three. Zone One and Two handle the east side from the bypass over to Beach Road. The first one runs from Eighth Street to Hollowell. The second section is from Hollowell down south and encompasses Wellbone and South Nagshead. And then the third section is the west side. Internally, what we did also was created three divisions under each one of those for us internally to kind of microscope each area for work. And that was mostly for, like I said, internally for us to distribute the workloads, to keep everything tight where everybody would know, but that was the overview. How we set it up and how we started was we go in, we trim the culverts, establish the area to which we can operate. We run our culvert cleaner. We pull the sediment, the culvert cleaner is a new piece of equipment that we, that we had replaced. It's not a new piece, but it's a newer piece that was replaced. It pulls out the sediment out of the pipes, each pipe. We then demuck, which is pulling the sediment from the ditch line and reestablishing the bank or hauling it off, just depending on what it pertains to. And then we have the camera monitoring, which is more of an on-call thing. It's another new piece, item that we were purchased this year. It allows us to go in and see the, the pipes anywhere from zero to eighty, a hundred, 200 yards up the pipe. It's pretty amazing. It's allowed us to identify some issues without having to break through the ground and dig it up and create issues. And then schedule them unless it was an immediate necessity to be dealt with. Section one, we're complete with. We were pushed back one month due to the hurricane. We assisted sanitation and all public works really in collecting the hurricane debris. So we were pushed back one month. We started October first. We have completed it. It was approximately 40 hours of trimming and to get for the culvert cleaner. We had approximately 204 hours of culvert cleaning, 30 hours of demucking, sediment removal, and 10 hours of camera monitoring. As we go through that, the employees, there's one lead which was hired. He keeps a daily log and pictures, which is reported daily in the afternoon after we go through. That is then uploaded in the computer system and shared with other staff members. Section two, we have, we've started, as I said, we've completed section one. Section two has been started. It was November first, which is on schedule. It had, it took a little bit more time working through this one. In the past, we hadn't, I don't believe we quite touched it as much as we'd like to, but we did, again, the trimming, the culvert cleaner, the sediment removal, and the camera monitoring. Forty hours, again, complete with the culvert trimming, 247 hours of culvert cleaning, which is completed. The sediment we're finishing up on, I know there's an eight-week note on there, but that's to finish to complete all three zones. We have about another week left with the sediment removal in section two. As of 11/22, we had 67 hours and we had five hours of camera monitoring. There are a couple of sections we consider to be hotspots. I don't have the answer why. I assume it's from wind blow and just sand that comes off the ocean. So we had a little extra in those areas of sediment removal. And as I said, in section two, we're finishing up. We've got the right side of the beach road down south to come back this way, approximately 30 pipes. We should finish up this week with that. Moving into section three, our estimated start time will be January first. And I, my guess is it'll take six weeks to move through that. That'll be the west side. We spent a lot of time on the west side. I don't foresee any issues. Like I said, we just have the holidays to get through and then we'll get started. One thing that we have done that was kind of new, we've set up staff meetings on a regular basis every two weeks, which includes the public works director, the town engineer, town manager, deputy manager, and the public information officer. And I think for me, being mostly in the field, what it's allowed us to do is communicate what we're seeing out in the field and issues and review the pictures and, again, all the notes that are taken and just review them with the engineer. And then the other thing that has come up is how it affects future projects that they're working on that we're sometimes brought in on the backside or in the middle of. And it's allowed us to kind of bring them together so that if issues that we've located can be incorporated with stuff that they've set up for future work, then we're trying to work towards merging all that together so that we just go in there one time and try to do it all in one bundle. This kind of goes over the past five years since I've been here and just tried to give you a picture of where we're at. Again, up until July, we, our new employee came on in July. We're just finishing up the summer months, which takes a lot of manpower, but since then, we already have logged 807 hours. Our goal when we set out this year was to put 2,000 hours into maintenance. I don't see any reason why we won't get there. I don't think it's an overestimate. I think we're right on track. But that's where we're at right now. This is some of the stuff that you see out in the field and that we work on. Again, on the, we received a new auger. We asked for it and then we received it and we were very grateful. It allows us to go in and reestablish a ditch. When we go out and reestablish a ditch, we sow in seed. We try to go in and employees have tried to go in and make it look better than when we, when we got there is what our goal is. Our goal isn't to disrupt anybody or mess anybody up, but to make it look good and try to explain what we're working on. And they've done a real good job of buying into it and working with the public. We've had more compliments than we've had negative, negative responses. Here's the picture, the new cameras, as I addressed. The one on the left shows you a compromised pipe. That's an HDP E-pipe that has been crushed. I couldn't tell you how or why. It would be all speculation, but it probably something was pushed down in and it just caused it to actually cave in. That was a call-in. They called and said they couldn't get the jet back, or I'm sorry, the culvert cleaner through. So we went out, we set up the camera. That was about 100, 150, 175 feet down the line and they found that. The good part about that is it is impeding it, but it's in a, in a section where, that we can come back and schedule it. The one on the right is the same situation. They couldn't get through. Is it blocked, damaged? It wasn't. So we spent a little bit more time on it and got that one pulled out. That's strictly just sand and it could be a branch. You see anything, a brick or whatever, but it creates a dam and doesn't allow it to get through. This would be reestablishing banks. Some of it has been in, done in-house. Some of it has been contracted out. This is one that we did. We went in, demucked everything, cleaned the drainage, reestablished the bank, sowed in the seed, put our matting down to secure the sediment and to prevent any runoff, we then staple it and monitor it from there. Here are some more pictures, some of the things we've run into that have been issues. You have the nutria, which have been extremely bad. Going back to the last picture, that's killing our embankments and our, that's what's really giving us a fit. Again, we've discussed it internally and tried to find outlets of how we can deal with it and possibly moving forward, budget it for however, whatever we need to do to capture them or control them. On the right, we have an issue where I would, again, assume that someone didn't want to break their concrete, so they put their irrigation system through their culvert pipe going underneath their driveway. It works, but again, it creates issues. The center one would be a compromised pipe. That would have been a metal pipe that had just, it, our system is aged. It's not faulty. It's just aged and stressed a little, so you have to go in occasionally and repair stuff. That's an HDB, HDP, excuse me, repair on a pipe where we put our, cut out the bad section, put our bands on, and then seal it up. This is another piece of work that was done. Again, reclaiming the ditch line, cleaning the culverts, seeding, and just, again, this was an entrance to a neighborhood that was only one way out and it was completely blocked. Again, we demucked it and got everything out. Other than that, like I said, during the meetings, what we've, what we've tried to do and what really has been, we've been developing is how to reach out to the public and, again, work with them and explaining to them what we're running into. Again, informing everybody internally what's going on out there. We've tried to touch, and I would say with 95% certainty, we've touched every single pipe that we've gone out on. It doesn't necessarily mean we repaired it or replaced it or it's up to perfect standard right now, but we have logged everything we've came across and worked on. That's about all I have, to be honest with you. Open to any questions.
Great. Board members, Commissioner Sears?
Michael, you said that you were going to touch, didn't you say each section twice a year?
That's correct.
So what's the schedule for the spring clean?
I don't have it in front of me, but I thought that might come up. We've run in, so we're kind of feeling this out. This is our first established year of touching everything. And so we were doing, I was, I was guessing everything, but logically adjusting with what we had had in the past. But as we run up to summer, the heavy maintenance side will slow down due to our summer duties and it'll be more of what we've logged and going back over. And then, like I said, I don't have the next scheduled date to go back in and start the trimming and sediment. But the trimming and all kind of goes on all year. It's just that the culvert cleaning takes more manpower. So usually during those five summer months, it would be mostly trimming and just prepping and going back, where you could use one or two fellows and repair stuff. But it looks like that it's going to be November, December, January, and then I'm just not sure of the other one in the, in the late spring or before summer starts.
Okay. Thank you.
But the goal is to hit it twice a year.
Commissioner Cahill?
Thank you for that report. I appreciate that. We need to commission a nutria coat and send it to some social influencers.
Actually, just so you'll know, nutria is not a species that PETA cares about overall.
That's good to know.
Very good to know.
Considered a very invasive species and do more damage than they do good, so they're not something we receive a whole lot of comment about.
Okay. Good, that's good to know. Commissioner Brinkley, any questions?
Great presentation. I appreciate the detail. Would this be listed on the stormwater section of the website?
Yes, and also during the meetings, it's updated, the web is updated. So yes, everything's listed on the website and everything is updated usually within every two weeks.
Commissioner Fuller?
I'll show you how great my life is. I thought this was wonderful. This is the type of stuff I like. I certainly appreciate it and not the presentation, but the actual work that's getting done and I see it daily and I certainly appreciate that.
Yeah. I always enjoy seeing the crew out there with the culvert cleaner. That's a, that's a good sign. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. And that's who should be thanked is the crew, because without them, I wouldn't be able to report any of this stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for, Ralph, let me present. I appreciate it. I won't be allowed.
Thank you.
One other thing, I just wanted to let you know, it was, we're building the inventory that we need to do these projects. Nancy Kerewan with the Water Department had applied for and now has received a grant to purchase a new stormwater pump. It's a, it's a pump, it's a water pump, but we can use it in an event of, in event of emergencies like that to add. It was pretty costly to rent the pumps and we had them on standby and so it's, I just want to thank her and let you know, we've added that and that'll help. David's going back cleanup.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Just wanted to inform you about some ongoing research, which is currently underway within the town as it relates to stormwater. IFLOOD is a partnership between the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, along with the Town of Nagshead and the Town and Duck to help improve flooding predictions here on the Outer Banks. This research is funded in part by the U.S. Coastal Research Program. And the IFLOOD is actually a mobile application platform, which the users can go ahead and report incidences of flooding to help the research team better analyze and assess flooding prediction models as it relates to both storm surge and rainfall-based events. And I just wanted to go ahead and walk you through the mobile app. Up here on the screen, I have a couple screenshots of the mobile application. There on the left, that screenshot, whenever you open up the app, the landing page brings you to a map with your location. It's GPS referenced, but there is a pin just in case your location is off. Once you go ahead and hit the button on the bottom, it will take you to a second page where you can take a photo. That photo is then uploaded and then there is a third screen where you answer a brief survey. There are three questions that ask the location of flooding, the depth of flooding, and then whether there was any rainfall within the past 24 hours. Once you complete that information, you hit submit and that report is generated and sent to the research team. This, this app is available for download at both the iOS App Store as well as Google Play. And for additional information, you can go to iflood.whoi.edu or the town of Nagshead at, nagsheadnc.gov, Stormwater Management. And under the news flash, we have background information regarding this application.
Cool. Sir, any chance that this database once built would improve the flood maps the next time around?
I don't know about that, but what it will help town staff is create a knowledge base so whenever these conditions occur that we can notify our citizens in advance and give them warning that they can expect these types of conditions.
Great. Thank you.
The only thing that would improve flood maps is doing the correct modeling.
Yep.
And realizing that the estering shoreline floods, not just the oceanfront.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other, any comments from Commissioners? I would encourage, we need to, I trust, Roberta's sitting over there too, we need to encourage as- We need to encourage as many of our citizens as are interested in, in downloading this app and making use of it. You know, the more data, the better, I trust.
Right. We started off with a test group back in early November, and then we've published that here recently. And I think Roberta has put that on social media. We've also posted on our website as well.
I had seen this on social media, so that's good. Thank you.
A suggestion. Every time we get a photo of IFLOOD, we need to send it to North Carolina Emergency Management.
That's a good thought, too.
I think what it will do is it, it will, it will represent that flood maps aren't in touch with reality.
Yeah.
There'll be, I think there'll be a big conflict.
Yeah. We're disconnected. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Commissioner Cahoon, the resolution opposing reclassification of jurisdictional waters.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit of background, the Marine Fisheries Commission and the Wildlife Resources Commission are supposed to work jointly to settle matters of boundary disputes, if you, to be mild about it. As part of this, the legislature has mandated that every commission re-adopt its rules if they were necessary and help put them all back out to public hearing in the next two years. Overall, commissions are working on that. Marine Fisheries re-adopted their inland boundary rule in January of 2018 with no comments from any other commission at all, or the public. Then the Wildlife Resources Commission has suddenly brought this out and changed the .1 salinity to 5.2 parts per million salinity. And they based their reasoning on a commission, study that was commissioned solely for the Chesapeake Bay, which has, if you all are aware, has a wider body opening to the Atlantic Ocean than any of North Carolina's inlets. So that was how they justified it. The commissions put together two people to work on it as parts of their commissions, and the 2.6 was pulled out of thin air to be a compromise measure. It doesn't have any rationale and scientific fact. Attending the last Marine Fisheries Commission, there was a motion to put on the floor to re-adopt what they just did in January of 2018, and it was ruled out of order by the chairman, which was kind of odd. The Wildlife Resources Commission in October held their meeting in Wilmington. They have no public comment on their agenda at all. They made a motion during their whole agenda to just adopt everything that was in the packet without discussion on the floor and sent it to rulesmaking. The Department of Diner and Natural Resources has opposed this action. The Coastal Resources Commission has opposed this action because just adopting this changes all the rules. It stops crabbing, fishing, changes your primary nursery area boundaries, and what it would do on the commission, CRC agenda, it would take buffer zones on building from 75 feet to 30 feet, which if anybody can say that that's going to result in greater water quality for anybody downstream, including Deere County, or any of our fisheries and shrimping would, it's just mind-boggling. Where it is now is they're supposedly working together. The CRC has asked the governor to appoint a working group to include all the commissions that are affected, not just Marine Fisheries and Wildlife Resources, to figure out how to do the best science to justify any change, but to also take a look at all the unintended consequences that would result from this. What this really is, is an end run around Marine Fisheries, and it's a method to try to stop commercial crabbing, shrimping, and fishing in a lot of our sound areas, which those rules are supposed to be adjudicated by the Marine Fisheries Association and the Atlantic States Fisheries Association. So I've asked that this board take a look at the resolution that was adopted both by Deere and Terrell Counties to oppose this reclassification of jurisdictional waters rather than just let it flow unimpeded through the process. So I present for you, for your consideration, this resolution today. It's really got a lot of things that could affect us negatively in our own county. And it also kind of flies in the face of bi-local, bi-North Carolina. If you stop the fishing and the crabbing and the shrimping, how are you going to bi-local? How are you going to have people that have livelihoods in our area? We've just come off of one of the best shrimping seasons, and it's still going on, by the way, if you're not aware, in the ocean and the sounds. Really nice shrimp they're catching. But for one commission to try to force three or four other commissions to adopt this rule really is pretty egregious. And the only person that can really stop this from happening is the governor. It's going to end up on his desk to resolve this dispute. So I would ask this board to consider adopting this agenda, I mean, this item as proposed on the agenda. And I think everybody's had a chance to read it in their packet. And I would make a motion to Naggshead to adopt this resolution.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comment from board members? Hearing none, then all of those in favor of adopting the resolution opposing reclassification of jurisdictional waters as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, could I ask that we send this to the rest of the towns for their consideration?
Absolutely. We will do that. And I did not hear Hyde County when you mentioned counties.
Hyde County has not adopted the resolution. I was over there recently for some personal business and had opportunity to talk to their county manager and put this on her radar as well. And I have talked with the chair of the county board about contacting his people in the Carteret County, since that's a really big fishing area as well. And I would like to think that this resolution, as well as Deere County's, would go to all the 20 coastal counties, because that's where it affects.
Okay. We can do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other commissioner business to come before the board? I have no other issues, which brings us to other business. Is there other business? I'm sorry? Oh, yes. I am so sorry. Thank you. I, yeah, a lot going on. This slipped in my mind. It has been the town's custom in the past to acknowledge the season and to reward our employees with gift cards. And I would ask the board's consideration of that at this time. And those have traditionally been in the amount of $100.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the gift cards for Christmas Eve.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
There being no other business beyond that. Thank you. We do have the request for a closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege. Mr. Whitey, will you give us the citations for that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the board needs a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 in order to confer with the board attorneys regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege, specifically the Richardson and other condemnation actions that are currently pending.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for those matters that were cited. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The board will be in closed session. The board has returned to open session. Mr. Whitey, will you report for us, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the board did discuss the matters that we had in closed session to discuss with the town's attorneys, but no actions were taken.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Mayor, I have one thing that I'd like to ask to be put on our next agenda.
Yes.
We appointed, reappointed members of the ART committee, and I think we need that our next meeting consider staggered terms for those appointments.
Apologize. Yes, I should have recognized that. Thank you. So we will do that. Hearing no other business than a motion to recess to the December 11th to December 11th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. for multi-use path contract consideration would be in order. Motion. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Board is adjourned.[1788.64]